Hey, everybody. Welcome back to Talking with Guy. Today, I have a Whitman Select Woman candidate. And her name is Rosemary Connolly. And we'll be talking about her youth and her career path, and why she's running, and her vision for Whitman for the future. Hello?
Hi, how are you, Guy?
I'm doing all right. I remember from talking to you before the camera rolling, you mentioned that you are from Hanson.
Yes, I am.
How's growing up in Hanson? And building a family in Whitman? A kind of transition for you?
Hanson is a beautiful place. Hanson and Whitman are quite merged. They've been merged for a long time. When I was younger, it was just the high school that was regionalized. It wasn't part of the whole region. So it went from the elementary and middle schools were Hanson, and then we went on to high school, where we made a lot of our good friends and the people that we know. And I went to Women Hanson High School for about two of my high school years, but the others were at a private preparatorial, college preparatorial school called Goodland Academy out in Western Mass. But I still maintain many of my friends from both Hanson and Whitman to this day. And it's nice. I think they used to call us farmers. And we'd always come over to Whitman to shop. And you know, all the stores were here. We had Jubert's. My mother had the Christmas, you know, they had the Christmas accounts. And we'd do a clothes shopping here. And Burger King was the hangout.
Really?
Oh, yeah, that was the big hangout when I was a kid. But yeah. So yeah, I know the area. I did move away, went to school. And then I came, married, I had children, lived in Milford, Mass for a period of time. Was one of the heads of Girl Scouts over there. There's a, they have a large Girl Scout group, drew over 500 girls. So there's multiple, there's like a panel essentially. And I handled large events because it correlated with a company that I ran. That was, my company was called The Star Shop. We used to hire look-alikes and performers for events, sometimes on Broadway. And sometimes we would do advertisements. Or you know, you'd see a picture of maybe Princess Di, you know, doing curls. Well, it was probably one of our look-alikes.
Nice.
So then I settled down and, you know, had kids. And then moved back when my father got sick. My father lives in Hanson. I moved back this way to help out, to care for him and be closer to my parents. So I came back home when my youngest was in elementary school. He was over at the Connolly Elementary. And now he's in high school. And, you know, I moved to Whitman. And I'm going to be honest, I moved to Whitman because you had trash. And there was, you know, all the shopping and fun things were done here. So I said, well, I'm going to move to Whitman instead of Hanson. Because, you know, they have sidewalks, they have trash. When I was a kid, I used to say, oh, I wish I lived in Whitman. You know, so.
Yeah. Can I remember when I first came to Whitman? I used to walk everywhere. And I went to check out Hanson. Then I realized that, ah, wait, there's really nothing there. It was residential, and then there's nowhere really to walk. And so when a car comes by, my heart would just skip a little.
Yeah, you had to be in a bike going quick. And they have beautiful things over in Hanson, too. They have the Blueberry Farm. And they had, we spent a lot of time swimming. We swam a lot. We grew up off a pond. And then we had the camp and all of those activities. And things that we're trying now to kind of bring, and the recreational department's doing a great job sort of bringing a lot of those same things here to Whitman. We're doing a lot with Cultural Council. I do a lot of volunteering with them to do the same thing. We're going to be doing Whitman Day. Just like Hanson has Hanson Day, we're going to be doing our own version of Whitman Day. You know, so a lot of that same, the same fun stuff in Hanson that we have in here, and we can walk around and have trash. So, and we have Burger King.
Yeah. So. What is it that, because would this be the first time you're running for a select woman?
No, it's not the first time I'm running. We've just kind of gotten to know each other. But I've been almost five years, I think, close to five years on Finance Committee. And I ran other candidates for a period of time. I donated money, participated, door knocking for local elections. I'm a big believer that all government starts local. You want honest government? You make sure that you hold people accountable on the local level. Because they grow upward, right? So, you know, you plant what you grow. So running people and making sure that there are different opinions and conversations happening and voices in the process. So I run people and myself. For the last three years, I've run myself. But before that, it started before that, that I would invest in other people's election. I think I invested in Justin Evans at one point. And I gave a good amount of money to his and Christie Oreos and John Byers. And we ran School Committee members last year, the year before that, too. So I think David Forth, we did. So I've always run and made sure that, you know, that we were elevating different voices and ideas into the local election process.
You mentioned of elevating voices. And running for a candidacy that will be like a major, like your voice will be heard in a major way. What is something that you would like to improve in the Whitman?
Well, I think a lot, I think people who do know me know that I'm on Whitman Finance Committee. One of the, when I entered the Finance Committee, one of the things I wanted was to follow those state guidelines for finance. A finance committee is meant to be like a Ways and Means Committee for, on a local level. I mean, aspects of government often mirror each other down to the local level. That's why all government is local, right? You've got your smaller version, and you grow upward. Are, when I got on Finance Committee and I was reading those state regulations and looking how they applied, I saw that we were missing a lot of opportunities. We were miscalculating things like Chapter 70. And, you know, this is, it's a lot to kind of review all this. So I called in other people and on School Committee to work with me to, I said, you know, these calculations don't look like they're right if they're an aggregate model. And they reviewed them and figured out what was off. So I would, I would like to continue to have that real solid or attempt to have oversight. I know on our Finance Committee, we give solid financial advice to the town. And sometimes it's not seen, or, you know, it's overshadowed by, say, a selectman's budget, which isn't reviewed financially from the same standards as the Finance Committee. So that's an unusual thing. Not a lot of towns have a selectman comparison budget. So I found myself in a position of saying, well, we have a diminishing financial oversight. What can I do? Well, I can run. I can run every year and make sure that, okay, nobody wants to read those long, boring Finance Committee meeting minutes. And nobody wants to, I mean, watch, I mean, there's more exciting things to watch, like your television show than to watch all the different meetings. So I said, okay, I can, I can run and I can hold them accountable. I can say, okay, what's going on with your Chapter 70? What's going on with your, right now? Last year, we put in the financial report, we have a problem with Chapter 90 money, which is our, that Chapter 90 money cares for our roads locally. And we, if anybody's driven a road in Whitman, they know, they know that these roads, something's off, something's wrong. And we can kind of look back and see that we haven't registered a road in almost 15 years. And that's not usual. Because if they're not registered, then you're not getting that Chapter 90 money. So then you're paying out of your taxes to care for them. Opposed to getting that state money that assists you in caring for them to plow, care, patch, and rebuild them. That's coming out of your taxes. And right now, we have the warrant. Instead of having Chapter 90 money pay for a whole $200,000 worth of roads, we're paying out of what's our free cash, which is not free, by the way. It's just unallocated. And we could utilize it, but it's our tax money. So generally. So we're paying that to pay $200,000 worth of roads, which would often be seen, people would be using Chapter 90 money. And I think, I think we're using that Chapter 90 money for trucks and things like that. But, you know, that's, that's an unusual thing. So we want to make sure that we're plowing and caring for public roads, and we're receiving state aid for it. Instead of, you know, trying to bring them up to spec. So a builder is supposed to build a road to spec. And then we accept it. So it has to be made in a way that's sustainable. And then we accept the road. And then the state gives us Chapter 90 money. But if the road is not built properly, it breaks apart faster. And we can't accept it, and it won't receive Chapter 90 money. Some of my concerns are that, that $200,000 is trying to do the work that the builder was supposed to do, or the big developer was supposed to do, is build that road to spec. And we paying for that out of our money because it wasn't monitored or a bond was given back too early. And we're not addressing that directly. And I'd like to make sure that we do that so that we can plan forward with money and make sure that we don't make these same mistakes going forward. So we know, okay, this is $200,000 that should have been done by a private company. Even if we can't get that money back, we can say, what were the aspects that made it? So we ended up having to pay, sorry, we ended up having to pay for something that a private company should have paid for. Then we can fix that in our local government and say, we need our bonds to be higher. We need, we need three signatures before bonds are released. All of these things, we could, we can correct those things. But without having those conversations or making those conversations public, we're going to keep ending up paying for something, paying for something we shouldn't have to and not receiving the state aid that we should.
So with the Chapter 90, would it be more so of like the regular Whitman citizen pay, would be paying less for, to keep maintaining the road as?
Yes. If we receive our Chapter 90 money to its maximum amount, it should help us in, you know, to a percentage, right? Just like, we have to pay for our roads to some degree. But it would be a percentage of the roads covered by, by the state or assistance. And of course, this varies from year to year based on the governor's budget or whatever is given towards the Chapter 90 program. But, but it's a healthy percentage. And this is calculated based on your population, how many people live there, how many roads that are, that are built in a spec. But what they won't give you money for is if your builder or developer builds it in a way that's only going to last a year. They're going to say, no, you're going to end up having to, you're asking us to rebuild a road essentially. You know, you have to make sure that your developers are building these roads in a certain way that are maintainable and that shed water so they don't flood people's property. You know, there's all kinds of aspects to road building. And part of the reason our roads aren't, are breaking down is they're not built well. They aren't getting Chapter 70 money, I mean, sorry, Chapter 90 money to, to maintain them regularly. So we have crummy roads, you know?
So Chapter 70 will be for schools?
Chapter 70 is schools, yes.
And Chapter 90 is for public roads and access?
So basically, what I do, and what a few of us do, is we say, okay, how does the, how does the government support a town? What kind of money can we get from grants, from different programs that support a town? Because our taxpayers are not the wealthiest. We're not the poorest, but we're not the wealthiest. So, but we are in a range where we would be eligible for a good amount of state money. And where we don't, we're not maximizing that. We try to see how we can. And, and that's sort of, your first step should always be, okay, how can I support people, support people's, you know, wealth and well-being? And then you go on to your next step. And then we talk about how much taxes you should be putting towards it. But government also should be supporting it. It shouldn't just be just collecting the taxes. They should be looking at how much can we get elsewhere as well.
So the, so let's kind of like bring back. So you said that you came to Whitman. And coming to Whitman, what is it that draws you to the Financial Committee? Because I believe.
Oh, that's a great question. When I first got to Whitman, there were a couple of elements, a couple of things going on at once. I was putting my kids into the school. And one of my children is on an IEP. So she was coming over to, they were coming over from one school to the Whitman school system. And they weren't able to, I think the first statement they said is, to implement this IEP, we would need more hours in the day. This is an unusual thing to say. And I was thinking, well, something's wrong for us not to be able to implement this IEP. And another thing that was going on was, some of the people I had known for years, right, from the area, were going into foreclosure. Their homes were being foreclosed. And I said, thought to myself, well, their parents owned those homes. How could this be happening? I said, something's wrong with the financial aspect here. You know, they didn't take out loans on these houses. They're not, you know, and we know that the school isn't able to really implement a simple IEP. Something's off. And after sort of trying to, I had, I had gotten involved in a group when I was in Milford that talked about, I think we talked a little bit about it. It taught people how to invest. And we did it with the girls, how to invest in a way that, that makes it so your 30% of your income goes to housing. And, you know, it shows them how much money should go to different things and how much you could afford in a house and all those things. And it talked about foreclosure, one of them. So I brought some of those pamphlets to some of the people that I knew that were foreclosing. And the story started being the same. Well, we just took a loan out to do a ramp for my father to get in. We needed the roof redone. And this is unusual. So then we started looking at property value, the value of your home. We had, Whitman's a beautiful town. There's really good people. There's a low crime rate. And people generally know each other. It should be a town that people should be flocking to. But what was wrong? Why weren't people flocking? Why were the values of their homes so suppressed? So I looked out and we did a pixelated version of every assessed value in Massachusetts. I think I posted this on the Rail Whitman. You can see it. And it looks as if somebody put their finger right on Whitman. Well, it affected these people because their homes weren't of a good value when they took the loans out on their homes to do the roof over or to do the ramp. They had to get a higher rate, interest rates. And they ended up in the same problems that these people who bought ARM, you know, did the ARM, the same foreclosure, the same things that were pitting a lot of people in foreclosure in the, you know, in the early 2000s. The same process happened to them, even though they weren't buying a new home. And I said to them, well, that shouldn't be happening, right? This shouldn't be happening. Why, why, what about how we're investing in our community makes it so we have suppressed home values? Makes our largest asset diminished by close to a million, no, sorry, close to $150,000 per home if we do comparative houses in the area, right? If you go over to, you know, Halifax and all those other towns, why are their homes $150,000 valued more? You know, and it wouldn't even matter if the market's great or not, would be the last place, the lowest value to come in. So one of the things you look at is school systems. How we invest in our schools affects it. How we invest in our roads affect it. You know, we invest, so I do breakouts every year for Finance Committee now to say, well, what are we paying taxes towards these different things? And, you know, we try to even that out and make an even financial landscape so that people, you know, people have more value in their home. We still have a lot of work to do. But one of the first things I looked at was Chapter 70 and Chapter 90 because we had our bad roads and we had our, you know, we have nice schools, but we don't have a great investment with a lot of variety for programs. So, and that's kind of what people are looking for when they're moving into places, so.
I'm sorry.
There's a lot there.
I know, I know. I kind of lost my train of thought for a second. So throughout this experience with the, with your daughter's IEP and then seeing the school system, what is one of the ways that you can say that by being in the financing, by being in the Finance Committee, you've have a major impact in that realm?
You should ask the Finance Committee Chair because he's always like, you really push it forward first, you know? I know, I can't say I individually have any impact, right? It always takes a team, takes a great group. One of the great things that has happened with the Finance Committee now is we're non-political, right? Completely non-political. It's about the numbers. We do comparisons. We put forth the best financial path forward. With no, we sort of separate ourselves out of any political realm. We have a diverse political group. Everybody's across the board politically. And so, and one of the reasons I'm running is that we'd come up with this great information, these targeted issues, and we'd put it into the selectman's hand. And it then goes into a political realm. And something very different happens. It doesn't begin to service the community. We start to say, hey, look at, here's an example. We have a lot of what's called hold harmless debt in our schools. We have millions of dollars. And over the years, it's sort of has been offsetting our Chapter 70. So we received Chapter 70. The Chapter 70 actually goes to pays, you know, goes and pays up the hold harmless debt. And it sort of equals us out slightly below, I mean, below average funding. Actually, it's not slightly below, we're in the lower 5% of funding for the state. 5%, I think it's 6%. We managed to bump it up a percentage over the last couple of years. But we were, I think we were the second to the lowest when we first started. And we're not. We're in like the 20, you know, the 26th and 27th range now. So there's some of the effect of sort of watching that go. But a real change has happened. And the hold harmless is no longer coming to us anymore. So what I'll do is I'll watch national trends on different type of aids that we are using and kind of try to mitigate any problems. So last year, I, and this is the difference between looking at something politically and non-politically, is that if you're political, you're sort of counting on things so that you could do something else. Whereas you're not just saying, this is a risk. We need to make sure that we're handling this risk, you know, and stabilizing. I sent out emails to Selectmen to, in both towns, Whitman and Hanson, told them, there's a real risk that we're going to lose hold harmless next year. We're not going to be getting that, the millions of dollars that we regularly do. And that's going to affect the school's finances. They didn't listen because they're not watching those trends. So anytime you say something from the financial end, it takes about two to five years for them to respond, right? And I run because I, I need that timeline to go up. Because two to five years could cost millions of dollars. I think they thought they were going to get 1.7 million in hold harmless. We got nothing. We didn't get it, we didn't get that 1.7. I think we, there was no increase. So hold harmless is given when you lose students. They sort of still pay you the aid. Then, you know, that didn't happen this year. They, they may have paid for other students, but we, there was 1.7 that we didn't end up getting. A million, 1.7 million. So that wasn't prepared for. And that's the sort of thing that does need to be prepared for. And when we have that disconnect between financial oversight and then the Selectmen's Office, it's creating that gap of time, and that's creating money loss. I think two years ago, I sent in emails and I spoke to the town administrator. And I said, listen, I don't think we're doing the busing correctly. It's supposed to be split out as 60/40. I don't think we're allowed to separate these and send separate bills, which ended up making Whitman pay 80% of the busing, you know, which is a large percentage of what, you know, the busing costs that was left over. And no follow-through was done there. As a result, it would be, it could be close to $2 million just in the interim that, you know, that we've been paying over in busing for a taxpayer. So making sure that we're, we're handling these financial things in a non-political way directly to really save the taxpayer from undue burden, financial burden, is key. And I run every year. This is my third year. Last year, there was a recount. I think it was six votes. And the year before, and it was 40 votes. So I'm hoping to get a little closer. And at least, like I said, I win. And I always say this, I win no matter what because it makes, it holds whoever does win accountable to address the issue. And our big issue this year is we waited a year and nobody did anything about that Chapter 90. It didn't get brought out in the public. It was put in those boring financial notes. And so I said, okay, I'll run. I'm going to run. And we're going to deal with the Chapter 90 issues now. We're going to make sure those roads are good. Having bad roads is costly. It's costly on your car. It's, you know, you know this. Everybody knows this. You're getting new tires and your, you know, struts and different car parts because you're hitting all those pot holes. And it's every single day, you're putting undue wear on your car. Those are the expenses that affect a household, right? You know, you're getting a choice between, you know, paying your oil bill sometimes and, you know, your car that you need to go to work. So watching those things, that lived experience of the average citizen of Whitman and being concerned of their finances and how they can succeed. Another thing, I talked a little bit about the home values. Investing our money in a way that makes sure that our average taxpayer is, has financial wealth. Their biggest asset is their home, their property. If we're investing in a way that draws, you know, $100,000 from their overall wealth or more, then that's not responsible. We should be investing in a way that makes them wealthier, that puts them in a position where they can, you know, look to their equity, their home equity for retirement, look to their equity for educating their children, redoing their homes, you know, for all kinds of different reasons. Your home isn't just a big thing you enter every day and dump things off. And your home is your largest investment. It's your, it's a big bank account, a big savings account as well.
It's your biggest liability and your biggest investment.
Exactly, exactly. You know, one thing they don't make more of is land. So that's something that should be going up in value, right?
But yeah, so you, as a, so for your candidacy, your primarily focus would be ensuring Whitman's financial future?
Paving, and I think we're going to be talking a little bit about it. Paving, paving a connected community, paving the way towards a connected community. So paving the roads better as a connection to your home, to your businesses, being in touch with community businesses to say, well, how can we help you service our community better? And how can we introduce our community to your local businesses? We did a little bit of that when we did Champagne Cake and Art. We made a commitment to only use Whitman businesses and highlight that if you're going to cater something, if you're going to buy cakes and if you're going to buy wine or champagne, we can do it in Whitman. We can do it in Whitman and we can do it at a great price, any price range and we can do whatever you want and we can make it classy. This seven mile long town can be your place to go for a party, right? And, uh, and I don't know if anybody went to that, but it was the talk of the town and. The variety of champagne and sparkling wines was, was vast. You know, people are still talking about the different. I think they had a mango spark, a champagne or, I know, they had all kinds of fun things. So. We have it here in Whitman. You don't have to go far when you're planning a party. You can, you can go to people you know and. That are here locally and that's that, that connection to business and the connection and the experience. Well. You have more money in your pocket when you're not paying for your roof from your paycheck. You're paying for it because maybe you took out a loan. To pay for it and, um, you know, to do your house and then you have a little more money in your pocket to buy that champagne, to buy that. So these are all connected. It's an ecosystem. So when every aspect of that ecosystem is healthy. You have a healthy connected community and schools are included that, in that too. We talk a lot about sustainability and a big aspect, the major aspect of sustainability is your future, right? If you're doing anything that negatively affects that future generation, you cannot call it sustainable.
Yes.
You cannot. So we talk a lot about, oh, we're going to have this sustainable. Whitman, you know, plan forward. Well, where are we? And where do we want to be? Has to be part of that connection, right? What does that future look like? And what, how does it affect every aspect of our, the people that live here from our employees? Our, our citizens and our businesses. And so that's the connected community when we're, we're making that path forward. We're making it smooth with the roads. We're making it smooth with the finances. We're making it smooth with the businesses and we're making it smooth with our employees. Where they know that they can, um, have their job and they'll be honored and they can honor our community back in return as well.
Yeah, that sounds amazing and I.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see what the future brings for you.
Oh, thank you so much.
And yeah, um, I've kind of been alerted.
Oh, you've been alerted?
But yeah, that's, that's kind of.
It's been so nice to meet you.
Yeah, it is.
Seeing you. So thank you for having me here today.
Yeah, I am happy to, we had a wonderful conversation, uh, before the camera started rolling.
Yeah, I hope to continue it.
Yeah, and hearing about your plans for the future, it sounds like it's going to be a better place and I wish you the best.
We have great people. Let's, let's make the place match the people, right?
Yeah, yeah. Whitman is an amazing town.
And people are amazing here. You really are lucky to, to be part of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, so May twenty first and people can go to the real Whitman. If they just want to go to a page and kind of look at some of the stuff I post there or then go to Rosemary Conley. I said, Conley for Selectmen on Facebook. Um, they can go check things out on that and join that particular page as well. You know, check out things. I have data. I have a lot of data in spreadsheets and pixelated because I. I'm coming from that financial sort of realm. So sometimes again, it's hard not to make it boring. So I want to apologize. I'm not flashy. But it's real.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to make finance look.
We're going to try though.
But yeah, it is, yeah. Yeah, it is, uh. It is amazing, the work you've been doing and the work you're going to continue doing. So thank you everybody for watching today's Talking with Guy episode and I will catch you on the next, next one. See you next time.